Technology, Ms. Patricia, Mrs. Chavis, you're ready?
We are ready.
Not okay. It is six oh eight P M on Tuesday, May twentieth, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome those who are participating in the Board of Education meeting in person and those watching the meeting via live streaming on YouTube. We would ask that anyone addressing the board to please use the microphone at the podium and to identify themselves for the record. As a reminder, the link to the meeting is on the district webpage under Board of Education. The streaming will run through the end of the meeting. In the event that there is a disruption in the streaming, I will pause the meeting until it is reestablished. If any board members are absent, we do not have anybody absent, sorry about that, just reading went long. As allowed by the O M A and the district's open meeting resolution, we are all live and nobody is calling in telephonically or participating over YouTube. And by anybody, I mean any board member. So we are now moving to item B, the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Tally.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great government of Georgia. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, please be seated, we are on to item C, the announcement of the meeting. Mrs. Chavis, would you please announce the meeting?
This meeting has been announced in accordance with the New Mexico Open Meetings Act and the Los Sona Schools Open Meetings Resolution and is a legally constituted meeting of the Los Sona Schools Board of Education.
Thank you very much. The approval of the agenda is item D. Mrs. Chavis, are there any changes or deletions to the agenda?
In the interest of the guests and the audience and a better flow to the meeting, I would like to ask for the following changes in the order of the agenda. I would suggest the numeration remain the same and that the order will be reflected in the minutes. Immediately following the approval of gen- of agenda, we would move item L one to two, Acting Superintendent of Schools Report. Susan D. Chavis, Acting Superintendent, number one, recognition of N M A A State Concert Band Champions Valencia High School. And two, recognition N M S B A L L S Student Achievement Recognition Award recipient Mark R. Garcia, Director of Transportation. We move item E one to three approval of minutes to follow item K approval of consent items.
Let me make sure I understood you correctly. Your recommendation is to move item L one, recognition of the N M A A State Concert Band Champions from Valencia High School immediately after the approval of the agenda and remove L, item L two, the recognition of the N M S B A L L School Student Achievement Recognition Award recipient, Mr. Mark Garcia, who is the Director of Transportation. Then we would take the approval of minutes to be after item K, is that correct?
With the exception of the removal of N M S B A L L S Student Achievement Recognition Award recipient Mark R. Garcia, Director of Transportation, we would remain with that agenda item.
Is he here?
He is not, but he has given us permission to move forward. He is at his son's graduation tonight.
Okay, so we don't want to put that on to a different agenda or agenda when he would be present?
Correct, because he may be on vacation in June as well.
Oh, 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 okay, that's okay. Do I have a motion?
No, I'm sure.
Mr. Vickers.
So I also, I would like to add to that change that we move item K to directly below approval of agenda because the minutes are on the consent sheet approving these minutes. So that way we can approve the consent and then the minutes are taken care of in that consent.
So you want to move all of K to immediately after the approval of the agenda? Then with the other changes, have item L one and L two. No, you want to have approval of minutes immediately after D, then go to moving L one and L two to and then go right into F.
We could move them to below the recognitions. We could move K to below L one and two. So we can do the recognitions. And then we would approve the consent items and that would cover those minutes.
Okay, but item E is the approval of minutes. So if we do item D, item E, L one, L two, and then go back into the agenda being number, item F.
No, item D and then Ms. Chavis's recommendation of moving L one and two right below item D.
Okay, and then E?
No, then K.
And then E.
Which which would cover E and we wouldn't have to address it at all.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Can we make this any more complicated?
We can.
Wanted to know, like.
All right, and we have one other Madam President as well. Item H, which is a statement by Mr. Tally. I'd further amend that we place item H in front of new business. Which I'm looking for right now.
That is item D. Huh? Really, yes, item S.
Right after R and before D.
Hold on.
We are super helpful tonight.
There we go.
Super helpful.
There we go, in front of item S. What we're trying to do, y'all, is get you out of here as quick as you need to be. Okay.
All right, I'm going to do this one more time, just because we haven't had enough fun yet tonight. If we can approve the amended 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 agenda, it would then be item L one and L two from the Superintendent's Report. Item K, which is the approval of the consent items, which would take away item E, move to item, the rest of the agenda, except for H would now become immediately before S.
S.
So it would go R H S. Do I have that correct?
Yes.
Holy.
Are you okay with that, Ms. Lauren? Got it?
Yes. Going to come to a meeting again, ever. Is there a second to the amended amended motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Thank you, I am going to call for the vote. So Mr. Vickers motioned, I'm going to give that to Mrs. Simoyah. The vote, Mr. Vickers, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoyah?
I vote yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. Okay. We are now
L one?
To L one.
Perfect.
Yes, sure.
I would like to invite Ms. Suzie Chavis to our podium tonight so we can recognize our very special and distinguished guests. You all are probably a little sleepy today, we are all at graduation yesterday, so you played very well, thank you.
Madam President, members of the Los Sona Schools Board of Education, Acting Superintendent Chavis, thank you for the opportunity to speak about Valencia High School. So we would, we are very honored to congratulate this group of students. They are part of the Wind Ensemble and they are the winners of the Class Four A Concert Band. They are the champions of that, that was April eleventh. So we are very proud of all of their hard work and we would like to call up the Band Director and Assistant Band Director, Band Director Michelle Standberry and Assistant Band Director Nathan Van Dan, can you please come up? I would like to give them the honor of speaking about their students.
Hi, I'm Dave Van Dan, I'm the Associate Director of Bands at Valencia High School. Ms. Standberry is the Head Director of Bands and she graciously allows me to conduct the Wind Ensemble. As I frequently say, she builds foundations and I build flying buttresses and you cannot have flying buttresses without foundations. These kids have put in incredible work this semester. They have stayed humble, they have stayed hungry and they pushed all the way through to the end. I'm so incredibly proud of them and I'm so incredibly thankful to our supportive administration, both at the district level and at Valencia High School for allowing us to do what we do.
Ditto.
So with that, our Director of Secondary is going to come up and help us distribute some recognition for everybody. First person is Michelle Standberry. Nathan. And with that, we have a list of students, if they're not here, that's okay, just let us know, we'll hold on to them. We have Natalia Hernandez, please come on up. And when you come up, we ask that you'll be the center of the stage here, okay? She's here. Garitza Alvarez Torres. Destiny Silva. Marlia Klobuchar. Alfredo Olivereros. Anthony Chacon, please come up. Alexander Baca, please come up. You need it. Nathaniel Ortega, please come up. Well.
All right. I screwed it up.
I went too fast.
She goes up here, he has.
Sebastian Cuero. Travis Paul. Miguel Carrasco. Ryan Sevedra. Eric Arvizo Jaime, please come up. Ronald Padilla, please come up. And last but not least, Chad Ward, please come up.
Yeah. I'm sure all of them. He brought her banner and they brought theirs.
Yes, can you guys please pull out your banner?
We have a long shirt. And we're peeking out. It's an octagon. We're scratching the paper. Go. A lot of photos. Scratch, 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 scratch.
All right, did you guys, you should be Neil, you guys come over here.
This is the press, they'll tell you how to do this. You get in the paper, please.
That's right.
That's right.
Over. And then you guys. That's what I got it. Don't get in front of them. All right, everybody else squeeze in. Guys all know each other, actually. Yeah. All right, so you really say Valencia, use the bulletin.
Again, thank you all for your hard work and congratulations and thank you for being such a great representative of your school and our district.
So one of the things I wanted to say, recently, Mr. Vickers and his lovely wife and my husband and I were able to be at Gala, it was for the Pilot Club, where we had the pleasure of listening to not the Wind Ensemble, but I know many of you look very familiar from the Jazz Ensemble, is that correct? But how many of you guys are all in the Jazz too? Great.
Yeah.
That was such an outstanding performance. It was amazing and so I am so sorry that I missed your presentation at state because if it was even better for you to be state champs as it was for that particular festival, you guys had to just bring down the house because you impressed us. We were very proud. My husband and I stuck around for a little bit afterwards and there were so many community members who were just thrilled with the talent, the musicality, the dedication that all of you brought to the stage. So congratulations to the instructors, congratulations to the students, thank you parents. I am a former band parent myself, I know what those practice sessions are like in the house when you can go nowhere else, so thank you for your patience and for supporting the arts in the public schools. So congratulations, highest honors, you bring us great pride. There any other comments from the board?
I'd just like to say that you, you may not fully realize it now, but you bring such credit to the community, to your school, to your family, to yourself for these achievements. You probably won't get front page news in the Albuquerque Journal, but you should instead of the other stuff you see. So remember, whatever you do, it's going to reflect on all the people that are behind you, your family, your community. So thanks a lot, it was not.
And yeah, congratulations, but I want to, I want to go a little bit deeper with instructors. I know they haven't been doing this that long at Valencia High School. So I mean, be like head coaches and come up with the championship team, that's like awesome, bro. I mean, it's awesome. I mean, congratulations to you guys for sticking with it and I know it's a lot of hard work, so it's, congratulations, that's pretty good.
Mrs. Simoyah? Absolutely, I'd just like to say how impressive all of you are. To see some of you that were able to walk in the robing ceremony and the graduation. For those of you that are younger, can, you've got a lot of, you step up to the next man up in the leadership role. You are all incredibly impressive and when I said to some of you, you make us proud, we're serious about that, you make the entire community proud. And I'm hoping they may not. And I'm hoping they may not be on the front page of the Albuquerque Journal, but perhaps the news bulletin because you're deserving of that recognition. So. Let's get the good stuff on that front page.
I just wanna congratulate you. I think it's, it's awesome. You know, we, we've seen plenty of athletes up here, but I think it's great to have. A state championship that is academic. I mean, that, that is awesome. That, that just says something about. Your dedication, your, your teacher's dedication. That's just, that's awesome. And something else. Whether you continue to pursue music throughout the rest of your life, or if it's just high school or whatever, music will be a part of your life. And it will shape the things that you do for the rest of your life. So, awesome. Good job.
And with that, we are going to excuse you if you want to run quickly from the room because. Meeting will be more stuff. You are welcome to stay and we would love to have you, but we appreciate you may not want to be here.
We enjoy you all. Fantastic.
That's something to look forward to.
Thank you, guys. That's incredible. Opening music. We appreciate that.
Dr. Osowski, you really know how to clear a room.
Says some things we said. Thanks, guys.
None of us have. I am now on item L two, Mrs. Chavez.
Yes, I'd like to invite Ms. Trezak up to the podium to recognize Mr. Mark R. Garcia.
And before you speak, Mrs. Trezak, I have a little thing here. Every year, the Los Angeles Schools Board of Education, in conjunction with the New Mexico School Boards Association. Selects an individual they feel have gone above and beyond for students, staff, and this, and this district as a whole. At the board meeting, um, held February of last, or this year, the board members unanimously, unanimously selected Director of Transportation. Mark Garcia to be the recipient of this year's award. Ms. Trezak.
Madam President, members of the board, um, so I did, um, make Mark aware and he was going to be here. However, um, then he found out about the, the graduation and had to cancel. However, when I did tell him about a tremendous honor. Um, he said, are you sure you got the right Mark Garcia? Cause that does happen quite a bit. So it's like, yes, it is. Director of Transportation also says so. Um, so he was very honored to re, to receive that award. Um, but unfortunately, um, graduation for his son.
That is awesome. Mr. Garcia was my neighbor and I know the effort and time he was putting in. To the job before he found a different home. Um. Long hours, early in the morning when I don't want to even think about getting out of bed, he's on the floor. You got that right there, Mr. Bennett. Um, but just the time away sometimes from family, driving and making sure our roads are secure. Uh, working with our drivers to make sure that they have the training and the skills that they need. All of the things that he does. So, um. I, I know it could not have gone to a more deserving person. I was very excited that Mr. Bennett nominated him. Um, because absolutely it was an important nomination. So, Mr. Bennett, please.
Yeah, she tried to take my win. So, yeah, I nominated Mr. Garcia for those reasons. Uh, he's one of the first individuals at three thirty in the morning. Uh, he's out there checking the road conditions and making sure it's safe for not just the bus drivers, but the students, staff, family members to travel. Uh, in addition to that, with the transportation, uh. Staff included the bus driver mechanic's office, the route specialist, um, it is tired us, but. Since he's been the director there, this whole transportation went to a whole different look. It was ugly before he got there and I'm not gonna lie about it. And he's, he ironed everything out and that thing runs like a, a smooth machine and. And that's one of the reasons why I really wanted to nominate him and you know, he was very, you know, during COVID, using the bus to get food to the kids, hotspot. So, uh. Like I said, we got it here for him. So make sure he gets it, okay?
Say, and I, his dedication, like you said, he starts early. I also know I've gotten, um, you know, I need to get him a call, even a message and I, I think one time I got a. Call at like eight o'clock at night and he was just finishing his calls to parents and stuff. So. Not only does he start early, sometimes he, so he's very dedicated to his job. He has very much a very hand due. Anytime we kinda present him with a, of. An issue, a task to do, he does, he will figure it out kinda attitude and, and that's, that's wonderful. So thank you on his behalf.
Any other comments from the board members?
I think you guys covered it.
I think everything's covered. He's an incredible individual.
We're very proud of him. So, Mr. Garcia, when you get back and you do your homework and watch the board meeting. Um, please know we appreciate you and this award could not have gone to a more deserving and worthy individual. So we're very proud of you.
The live streaming show, I'll give him a thumbs up.
If I have my notes right, we are now moving on to item K. Please correct me if I'm wrong. I would stand for a motion regarding the consent items.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Vickers.
That, uh, we consent the, all of the action items on the agenda. There, there was no discussion asked for by any board member. Do I can list them all out?
Yes, sir, you do.
I didn't do a problem. Approval of minutes, uh, this will include approval of minutes, item E. Um, number one, the closed executive session from April fifteenth. Of this year. Number two, the regular board meeting from April fifteenth of this year. And number three, the special board meeting of April twenty ninth for this year.
Mr. Vickers or Madam President, point of order. Since they are consent items, unless we're dissenting them, we do not have to list them. We simply have to list. That the approval of the minutes is also part, uh, of a full consent, that the, none of the minutes were dissented as well.
Okay.
Okay, so how far do I?
You're fine.
You're fine unless you dissent the items.
No.
We don't have to read them. It was approved, I believe, as second. It's just for the purpose of the audience. Uh, minutes are part of the consent item. It's just where they fall, fell on the agenda when the agenda was submitted. So we have basically combined the approval of the minutes with the consent items. Items dissented.
For the benefit of the audience, I, I meant to say this before we go into discussion and, um, the vote. Cause I think we've confused you. Consent items are the action items on the agenda presented by the superintendent and staff for approval. All agenda items have been reviewed by the board members individually. If no discussion has been asked regarding these items by, and by any of the board members. The action items may be submitted for approval with one motion and vote. The action items that are not consented will be discussed prior to action being taken. Is there any discussion? I'm gonna call for the vote. Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoyah?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
My vote, yes. Motion passes five zero. That moves us to the report on closed executive session, item F. As announced, the Los Angeles Schools Board of Education went into closed executive session this afternoon, May twentieth, twenty twenty five, from five ten PM. To six oh six PM pursuant to New Mexico statutes annotated ten dash fifteen dash one H seven. Pending or threatened litigation, specifically the board discussed threatened litigation pending against the district. Current matters relating to such pending litigation and options the board may, board may wish to consider. And limited personnel matters, specifically discussion regarding the contract for the superintendent. Which is effective July first, twenty 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 five and is pursuant to New Mexico statutes annotated ten dash fifteen dash one H two. I attest that no other topics were discussed than those listed in the motion and that no action was taken during the closed executive session. We are on item G. I would stand for motion regarding the, um, items discussed in closed executive session. Board members, do we have an, a motion?
President Osowski?
Yes, Mr. Tally.
I would like to make a motion and perhaps a series of motions, um, regarding the contract of, uh, Ms. Chavez as superintendent. Um, I move that we. Approve, that we begin the contract negotiations, starting with, first of all, appointing two board members to act as representative. Uh, to finalize, uh, negotiations with Ms. Chavez and a lawyer. For approval of her contract.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, on the discussion, I, I would, I would like to recommend that two members would be the president and vice president of this board.
I'll, I would like to amend my motion to that.
You will amend?
I'll amend my motion to that.
Mr. Bennett, will you amend your second?
Yes, I amend it.
Is there any other discussion? I'm gonna call for the vote on this. Mr. Tally, it was your motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoyah?
I vote yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero.
Dr. Osowski?
Mr. Tally?
I would move that we offer, um, Ms. Travis a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a starting salary with a. With an annual raise commensurate with the rest of the, uh, teaching, the teachers and faculty as approved by NMPED.
Oh, it's second that.
It has been moved and seconded to offer Mrs. Susan Chavez a starting salary of one hundred seventy-five thousand. With head raises, with raises commensurate with head. Um, determined salary increases. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that head raised to begin this year or is that head raised to begin next year?
That is to begin this year.
I'm gonna repeat the motion. It has been moved by Mr. Tally and seconded by Mr. Bennett to offer Mrs. Chavez a starting salary of one hundred seventy-five thousand. With the four percent head, uh, raise. For this school year, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any other discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to amend that motion to include any future head increments.
Good call.
So that we don't just cap her on this one year raise.
I'll amend my motion as such.
Mr. Bennett, do you amend your second?
Yes.
I am going to call for a discussion. Is there any discussion? I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Tally, it was your motion?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoyah?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero.
Dr. Osowski?
Sir?
I would like to move that we. Extend a two-year contract for the first contract period of Ms. Chavez's tenure as superintendent.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Tally, it's your motion. I'm gonna start with you.
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoyah?
Yes.
And I vote no. Motion passes four one.
Dr. Osowski?
Hold on.
Okay.
Hold on. Trying to keep up with all the pins here, sir. Okay, yes, sir.
I would like to motion, uh, that we evaluate Mrs. Chavez at least on an annual basis. Based off of the, uh, um, administration evaluation similar to what we did. Recently with Ms. Chavez and according to the strategic plans or focus goals that we, uh, set with her.
About, evaluate Mrs. Chavez. I'm just gonna repeat it back and all.
Yep.
Your motion is to evaluate Mrs. Chavez at least annually?
Yes.
What does at least? So only once per year?
No.
At least once per year.
At least annually.
If, if we decide we could do it more frequently. But at least once per year.
And you said based on the instrument we did this year, which is the administrative, the head adopted administrative competencies?
Yes. And based off of strategic plan and focus goals that we, uh, align with her or. Yes.
I'm gonna repeat this. You move to evaluate Mrs. Chavez at least annually based on the head adopted administrative competencies. And the focus areas of the adopted strategic plan.
Yes.
Is there a second?
No second.
Is there any discussion?
Madam, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Mr. Vickers, yes.
It seems like, well, for one thing, uh, there should probably be a date. For that evaluation, a deadline for that to happen. But I think also it seems that it would be better to have more frequent evaluations. So that the superintendent knows. How we, how her performance is based on our expectations. So I would recommend quarterly, but at the very least.
And.
Twice a year.
I will amend my motion to at least semiannually.
Okay, so that would be one at, by the end of December and then one at the end of the first year, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And Madam President, I believe it's a policy that we have to have one done by December fifteenth. Yes, we can figure out the dates and do it quarterly, but I would also, uh, amend my second.
So end of December, by end of.
It's December sixteenth.
Are you looking at a calendar? Because if it, board policy says December fifteenth, right? So, but that, if that's a Saturday or Sunday, it would be. We would have to straighten out that language with our attorney. And then.
December fifteenth is a Monday. So. Twenty twenty-five.
December, okay, so that is a Monday. And then by end of June fifteenth, twenty twenty-six, cause that would be. Can you tell me what June fifteenth, twenty twenty-six is? Is it also a Monday?
It is.
Oh, lucky Mondays. So the motion has been amended, the second has been amended. Um, is there any other discussion?
Yes, Dr. Sauski, just for, just for the benefit of, of those in, uh, the room. All of these will be discussed and finalized with the, with our attorney and with, um, the two members as discussed and with, um, Ms. Chavez.
Right, absolutely. What we have been advised by board council. Is that the, um, final form of the contract must be reviewed and approved. By the full board, which we are scheduling, I've got a special meeting called for June third, twenty twenty. by the full board, which we are scheduling, I've got a special meeting called for June third, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
So hopefully we are done by then and we can move forward and get on to student achievement. So yes, thank you for that detail.
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Simoia.
On a point of order, I would like to make that a formal motion as that was missing in a prior setting, board setting, so.
For the.
For the, the, the final approval and final review discussion.
We can do that over this one.
I'll make a separate motion to that. We can address the motion on, on review.
Right. Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Tally, it was your motion?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
I vote yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero.
Madam President?
Mrs. Simoia.
I would like to move, oh, look at she.
I wasn't done.
We all have ideas here, okay. I'd like to move that the content of the language, the contract language include the discussion items from our work session today pertaining the superintendent's participant in community events as well as content language regarding the vacation accrual, sick leave, professional membership, and the use of the superintendent's vehicle for business within and for district purposes.
I'm writing notes.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Mrs., I have a motion and a second that the discussion items or the contract, I'm going to, I'm going to mess this up, Mrs. Simoia, that the contract will include the discussion items from the work session, which include, and I'm going to go back to my notes. Participation in community involvement activities, participation at designated times in government and municipality meetings, participation and involvement in meetings with local law enforcement agencies, participation and involvement in meetings with other educational agencies within the county, details of about continued and ongoing professional development specific to Mrs. Chavez's pursuit of the doctoral degree, the use, the required use of a district vehicle while conducting in district or district-related travel or business that requires travel. I'm going to add to yours from our notes, because you said from our notes. Required residence within the geographical boundaries of the Los Luna Schools Public School District, continued memberships at the district's expense to include in CEC, ISTE and ASCD, the CES sub-section of the CEC and the AASA, the exclusion of allowances for teaching or consulting outside of the, or in, outside of the contract to occur at any time. Did I cover everything from those notes? Also, to discuss the details of vacation and sick leave accrual and the conversion for sick leave based on minimal use. I'm kind of stuck on language there. Are those the items that you've also wanted included in, in that topic?
Yeah, Madam President, there was, there's a level of detail on all of those that we don't, weren't we able to obtain during the fifty-five minutes that were spent for the work session? So that's why I left that, that language broad. I'll be making a final motion basically regarding final board review and approval, because we do have another work session scheduled in which we can discuss. And then we can go ahead and finalize it. But in order to get this started, those were the tones that we were discussing in the work session. I think there was valuable input by every board member in the work session, so, and with Ms. Chavez's. So once we can get all that, I think we can put the language into the contract. That's why I made a very general statement to include the language pertaining to the superintendent's participation in community entities, and we'll list those entities in the contract, language regarding vacation accrual, sick accrual, professional memberships, adherence to goals. So, so yes, and thank you for including the required residency in Valencia County.
Just as a point, part of the reason that I added those is you had referenced in your initial motion, which we can go back, try to summarize. Is that you had said discussion items from the work session?
Yes.
And for members that were not, or community members who were not present during the work session, I wanted to be clarified for the public record.
Perfect.
Okay, I am going to attempt to put your motion.
Okay.
She's going to repeat the motion and then.
Well, we're, we're going to attempt to verbalize it and then please correct it. Mrs. Simoia, you moved that other discussion items presented in the work session held immediately prior to this regular meeting to include various aspects of community-based activities and involvement will be, so community events and involvement, ongoing professional development, required use of a district vehicle for in-district related travel or district-related travel, required district residency in the district, other professional memberships, the limiting any extra or ongoing work activity not related to Los Luna Schools be discussed with, with Mrs. Chavez and brought back to the full board for final approval. Is that correct?
Also to include the vacation.
And the vacation.
And sick.
Vacation and sick leave accrual. Who seconded that?
I seconded that.
Thank you. I didn't get that written down. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Dr. Osowski, I'd like to add something with.
Sure.
Specifically with the vacation and whatever accrual. There was, there was a comment or request that there's, there's like a cap at four hundred hours right now that we'll roll over and a request that that cap be relieved for Ms. Chavez. And I would like to stipulate that that cap not be vested until after two years of her contract. So if for any reason she leaves prior to two years, she will be capped at the four hundred hours, otherwise she'll be fully vested in that. That request. Does that make sense?
No, I'm not going to buy that.
Okay, so if, if for any reason before two years, she, either she leaves or the board dismisses her or whatever, that she would be capped at.
Four hundred hours.
Yes, but if she stays with the schools for two years or longer, that that cap be removed and she would be vol- fully vested from day one in that.
I see what you're saying.
It's a good point, Mr. Tally. I think that during the discussion negotiation with the board's attorney, Ms. Chavez and myself and Dr. Osowski as representatives, we can discuss that and we will, the intent on the next motion will be that all of it would be brought to the full board.
Yes, I just, because I won't be in that discussion, I just wanted to put that in there.
That is a, that's a valid, valid point, valid point.
That's something you would like to have discussed.
Yes.
Okay, I'm marking it with the green asterisk, Mr. Tally, in my notes.
Today.
Borrow what's red.
It's a whole new day. Any other discussion on this motion before I call for the vote? Okay. Mr. Tally, it's your motion.
No, it's not.
That's mine.
Oh, it's, I'm sorry, Mrs. Sonia and Mrs. Simoia.
I vote yes.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero.
Dr. Osowski?
Mr. Tally?
I move that we approve the use of a school vehicle for all school-related business for Ms. Chavez.
I think we have had on the prior.
That's, yeah, that was in the prior motion. Yeah, that's, some of those are the discussion items from the work session.
That was a.
You're too steps.
All right.
Not a problem.
So I know that there's another one in you, Mr. Tally.
Oh, green, you're going in green.
I'm not, I, I'm waiting for him to give me his next one. I'm looking at him, writing his notes.
This other one was also most likely included in the, all other items discussed.
Right, we've got that already included in motion number five.
Yep.
And then, Madam President, I'd like to move, formally move that the contract, final contract will require final board review, discussion and approval.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? For the members of the audience, part of the reason we're being so explicit on step by step is we are wanting to make sure that the public is fully informed about all aspects of the contract that we are beginning the negotiation and finalization stages for and that we are being very explicit in the steps that the board will go through in order to reach a final contract. And then, as is required by law, that we bring back all aspects of the finalized contract or the contract for full review before it becomes finalized and for a board vote. So having said that, I am going to call for the motion. Mrs. Kittredge, do you believe that you have the motion or would you like me to repeat it?
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Sonia Simoia's motion is that, at the conclusion of the negotiations, that the final form of the contract must be reviewed, discussed and approved by the full board prior to full execution. Is that correct?
It's correct.
I'm calling for the vote. Mrs. Simoia, was your motion?
I vote yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes. Five zero. Do we have anything else on item G?
I hope not.
That's a pretty good start, I'm thinking.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. We are now on to item I, presentation and approval of board election resolution and proclamation. This will be presented by one of the board's counsel, Mr. Art Melendres from the Madral Law Firm, Law Firm. I'm sorry, Mr. Melendres, please join us at the podium.
Good evening, Madam President, board members, and let me add my congratulations also.
Thank you.
So what I'm here for is to ask you to approve an election resolution and proclamation which will call for a November fourth, twenty twenty-five election to elect three members to the board of Los Luna Schools. Two of the members that are elected will be elected for a full four-year term and one member will be elected for a two-year term. And the reason is there was a vacancy and an appointment and under the law, the appointed person can only serve till the next election. And so those positions are positions two, three and five, which will be up for election. There are a few important dates in the election resolution, and that is if you, if someone wants to be a candidate for the Board of Education, there's one day, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, where they can declare their candidacy. They would go to the county clerk's office and file the form that is provided by PED. The rest of the resolution specifies what is in state law for an election in November, which includes absentee and then early voting, and that begins twenty-eight days before the November fourth election. There's requirements for registration and the county clerk would close the books for registration on October seventh. And with those key dates, I will advise you that upon, if and upon your approval, we will get signatures and take this to the county clerk. There will be publications, the Secretary of State will monitor, and there will be an election on November fourth, twenty twenty-five, for election of board members. And with that, I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Members of the board, do you have any questions?
No.
No.
Could you repeat the date, please, for filing intent to?
Yes. The.
The August, whatever.
August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five is the day that a person must declare their intent to be a candidate. And the way that happens is at the county clerk's office, you sign a form and hand it to the clerk and it gets recorded. And then you become eligible to be a candidate. August twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
There is one day.
One day, one day.
Don't be late.
Don't be late, but you have all day.
But we hope, no, five days, just don't be late. Thank you very much.
With that, I turn, turn this back to the new superintendent for a recommendation for approvals.
I do recommend for approval.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the resolution as presented by Mr. Melendres?
Dr. Osowski?
Sir?
I move that we table this until June third.
Sir, is there a problem with tabling this until June third?
There is not. The only thing that must happen is that you're going to have to declare your candid, excuse me, approve the election resolution by June fourth, I believe, is the date of twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second to your motion to table?
A second.
Is there any discussion? I am wondering, Mr. Tally, if we should reconsider this item after the new.
After new business?
After new business.
Okay.
Would you be willing?
Yep.
Would you be willing to amend your motion to reconsider this item after the end of the new business?
Yes, I would that we table this till after new business.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vickers, were you willing to amend your second?
Yeah.
Is there any discussion?
We can do that even though we were just an agenda already.
I don't believe that there is no reason we could not. If we could table it, it would be going to another one, so we're, we're taking it up.
Just want to make an attorney that might be able to answer that.
So, Melendres, how are you?
Well, technically, we could table it and a motion could be made at the end to take it back off the table.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Oh, there we go. That's a better one. There we go. We've learned something. We're going back to your original motion.
I motion to table this item until later time.
And your second stands?
Yes.
I will take the vote, please. I will take the vote, please. Mr. Tally, it is your motion.
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sonia Simoia?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes by zero. Yes, now it's in green. I do know that we have a public comment. We're on item J.
Madam Chair. Are we gonna do the rest of the superintendent report in the proper order now?
That's what I see. So, yes, yes. For item J, public comment in accordance with Board Policy B2150. Mrs. Chavis, how many speakers have signed up to provide comment at tonight's meeting?
We have one speaker.
Before we move to public comment, I would like to remind our audience of the Board's procedures for handling public comment, which are found in Board Policy B2150BEDH. Public comment is limited to five minutes per individual speaker. However, the Board President may further restrict or waive these time limits based on the number of speakers. The Board welcomes public input. The Board does not prohibit public criticism or comment on personnel matters, but does discourage personal attacks on board members, staff, personnel, or other members. Presenters are cautioned that statements or representations concerning others that convey an unjustly unfavorable impression may subject the presenter to civil action. Any person making public comments shall be solely responsible for the content of his or her comments. The Board neither adopts nor assumes responsibility for any comments made by individuals during the public comment section of the Board meeting. Would Mrs. Amber Rodriguez please join us at the podium?
Good evening, Madam President, School Board members, and Superintendent Mrs. Chavis. This evening, I will be praying for Los Luna's Public School children, teachers, administration, parents, and caretakers. As the school year concludes and the summer break begins, Lord, I bless your holy name this evening, and I come to you in prayer and intercede for the children's safety during the summer break. Lord, I ask for your divine protection over the children of Los Luna's Public Schools in the great state of New Mexico. Please guard them from accidents, injuries, neglect, harm, and neglect and harm according to Psalms 34:7, which states, "The angel of the Lord encamps around those who fear him, and he delivers them." I also pray, Lord, please shield the children of Los Luna's Public Schools in the great state of New Mexico from negative influences. Please protect them from harmful friendships, media, and other sources that seek to corrupt their minds and hearts. Please surround them with godly people who encourage and uplift them. According to Proverbs 31:20, which states, "Walk with the wise and become wise, for a companion of fools suffers harm." And 1 Corinthians 15:33, "Do not be misled; bad company corrupts good character." And Father, I petition you on behalf of the parents, caretakers, summer programs, and ask you to humbly bless us with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding on how to raise these children according to your ways. As stated in Proverbs 26, 22:6, which states, "Train up a child in the way he should go, and even when he is old, he will not depart from it." I humbly pray all of these requests in Jesus Christ's name, and I just want to thank all of the teachers, the administration, the school board members, transportation, bus drivers, all our safety officers, everyone included in this school year. I want to thank them for their time and their diligence.
Thank you so very much. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Have a very good evening. We are now ready to go on to item L.
Dr. Rosowski?
Sir?
Prior to that, can we take a five-minute break?
Would you like a five-minute break? Sure, you can. We're gonna, the Board's gonna be in recess from 7:11, please. We'll be back in five minutes. I'm gonna get ready to call this meeting back to order.
And we're live. There we go.
The chairs are good. It's her show. There we go. Ready? Calling the meeting back to order at 7:16 PM. We are on item L3, the construction update. Mrs. Chavis, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Thank you. I would like to invite Mrs. McMahon to the podium to provide our monthly construction update. Madam President, members of the Board, Acting Superintendent. Chavis, again, thank you for allowing us opportunity to share with you all and the community the different improvements we have going on throughout the district. I will start to say that we have been very fortunate to have one of our Los Luna's High School interns with us in our office this past couple of weeks, so she graciously used her talent and much more skilled expertise in presentations and created the presentation for us today. So we would like to thank Alora LeMond for her work that she did on this. Upcoming projects, we have Los Luna's High School. We're continuing work on the stadium project, but part of that, aside from that, we are making some improvements to the parking lot. We did a lot of crack fill and replacements of those areas where the asphalt has separated. A full seal coat and restriping will take place over that parking lot to make ADA accessibility to code, having the right crosswalks, the spaces that we need for that parking lot. We are also started this week, some of our playground improvements for our ADA and accessibility features are starting to go in. Am Parish and Boski Farms are our first to receive that, and we're also looking at scheduling some others over the summer. These projects will go into August and September as we are competing with a lot of other school districts around the state for installation of summertime, but we are starting to chip away at these projects. Another one, we do have our POs in place, and we are actively working on our contract documents and finalizing items that we're needing to order with the vendor and contractor for the Valencia Elementary and Desert View Elementary Bathroom Partition Replacement Project. We'll have more updates for that coming. Also, Valencia Middle School Science Lab Flooring Replacement will take place this summer. We will, we will be, as we start actively switching out older flooring. This is an area that Valencia Middle School has expressed a need in their science classrooms to have safer flooring rather than carpet, and it can make those improvements. We also are fortunate enough, we would like to thank our local representatives at Legislative who did approve some appropriation projects for us, that we got the confirmation of those. And one of those projects is the Los Luna's High School P8, which is the Performing Arts Center Improvements. This is gonna be primarily for the sound system and rigging on some of the areas that we definitely need improvement on. We have done a past project with the lighting control boards and the house lights. This will give them new control sounds, speakers, improvements to the sound and connections on the stage. So we're actively starting to put that project together. Moving on to the next slide is Los Luna's High School Stadium Improvements. This picture was taken a few, like about a week ago or so. They are starting to put on the roof, finalizing doorways and buttoning up that so we can see finishes in there. We are slated to have this project completed mid Aug, mid August, so it'll be open for the first football game. Moving on to our other major project is Peralta Elementary Construction. What we're looking at here to the left is from the top floor, the second floor, in down into the library. We have all our exterior windows put in, and they're getting the finishes in place there. To the right is the gymnasium flooring went in a couple of weeks ago and finalized all the striping and the coating on that. They do have some bleachers in, and we are actively working some of our school students for the mural that they will start tomorrow in that space. The next slide is some other additional items at Peralta. We did receive all of the kitchen equipment. So all of that is being installed this past couple of weeks. And then we are seeing all of our school blinds come in where they have a dual purpose on these blinds. You have the complete blackout, but then you also have that diffuse light option. So we could still allow light in, but give the security of those classrooms should they need it. And we are slated to wrap up the interior of that building at the end of the month with our final inspections happening that first week of June, giving us a couple of weeks to fine tune and touch up anything that needs to, and we are on schedule to have our move-in in July for the next school year. And then another item, the next couple of slides, we're gonna go over kind of an update on where we are at Am Parish Elementary. So we have been working with a design committee that consists of parents, teachers, administrative staff here at Central Office as well as at the school site. And we've been meeting about every other week to do our programming phase. What the programming is, is where we look at what spaces are needed in that square footage, so we can reach that number. During that programming phase, we look at what are the goals for the school and what are we wanna focus on as we design this school. So here are the top five categories as we compiled everyone's information and input from the school. Teachers, students are kind of the top five areas of focus. And I'll just kind of go through, we wanna hub for innovation of future-ready learning, so we can adapt as learning changes and evolves. We wanna modernize, we want access to the site that it's safe compared to what we have now, improve those areas. We want it to be inviting, an accessible environment for all community engagement, a place for culture and community, shared spaces for collaborative learning and working on that. Strategic adjacencies where we have things located, we wanna make sure that we're lining this school up so it flows for what they need and some flexibility within the school. So with that, I'll go to the next slide. We've had different areas that we've worked with, not only our, our design committee, but also the staff of Am Parish Elementary. A survey was sent out. We also worked on post-its where we said, what would we like to see in our school? What are some focuses? These are some of those items and how they were grouped to reach our goals. So I'll let you, you can look through those. Going to the next slide, kind of the funner, more exciting one for us, is the input we received from students. So we got so many variations of ideas, and this is important. And one thing that, when we started looking at these as a design committee, we saw how much the students' ideas also met with our goals and how the unity, what I learned is at Am Parish Elementary is definitely a unified campus, and they all share a very similar vision and mission and desire, not only with their staff all the way from administration, but down to their littlest learner at their school site. So these are some of the very creative and artistic ways that we were shown. They wanted a big art room. They wanted windows. Were very important to a lot of students. Also, technology was important to them. And the next slide, we learned that dinosaurs were very important to students. So I will not forget that when we find a creative way to incorporate dinosaurs into our design. But music was a very common theme amongst the students and a playground for all. We saw a lot of students draw and articulate in words the importance of inclusiveness in their school and how they wanted to make sure we had ramps to the playground, that we had a playground that all kids could play on, that we had room spaces where they can gather together. We had a wonderful design dinosaur idea of an eight-story dinosaur building and what each floor would consist on there. But again, in light of the fun of all of it, when you really read what they wrote, these are just a few of the samples that we're showing you today. We also had students that created their own PowerPoint presentation that walked you through a whole school, that showed what the library would look like, what the cafeteria, what the classrooms. So it was very fun for us to go through and also made us very aware of, from a student's perspective, of what we're doing here and who is gonna be part of this building. So with that, we are wrapping up our programming phase and getting to finalize the square footage of our building, which we will go back to PSFA to get that approval and the PSCOC final on that. That will be submitted to them the end of this month, and then we'll work at seeing what approval we get for the July PSCOC meeting. And with that, I stand for any questions?
It's amazing. I am going to be so excited to see, first of all, that stadium at the high school. It was nice up there for the robing ceremony last week. I kind of got to park down by there and see it coming along so nicely. It will be beautiful by August. So I'm very excited about that, and I'm looking forward to the opening of Peralta. And these pictures from Am Parish are to die for. They're adorable. And I'm anxious to see the eight-floor dinosaur. The community to look over it. I think that's for.
Eight-floor.
Any other questions or comments? I've got a few questions, but.
Your Vickers?
I want to find out if.
I want to find out if, if we know yet if we're going to be authorized for a total rebuild, or will it have to be a remodel?
We will, we did get the approval at this last PSCOC meeting that they are approving us for a full replacement school.
Yes.
And will that, that will be east of the existing school site?
Our property, as we have learned in the discovery of this, is actually south of Am Parish Elementary. We have quite a bit of acreage that's south of the school. The area to the east, which was originally part of the state land that was allotted to us, was changed in about 96. And part of that was rescinded back to the state, and then we were given more land to the south of the school. So total acreage of the whole campus that we have there, including the existing site, is 55 acres of property. So we have plenty enough to build south of the school.
So you can build the new school without any disruption at all to the existing?
Correct.
Okay. So the other thing, they're building something down there on Monzano Expressway, just south of the bus compound. Do you know what that is?
From what I've heard, there's solar panels that are going in down there, but I, I'm not 100% of any other projects happening in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
I don't have any questions. I just like this, this little statement, and everyone is talented. That's, that arch, that kid's good.
I think we might have some future architects and designers at the elementary.
Keep an eye on that one.
Mr. Kelly?
I think it's great that you got the, from, from the students. Some of them can draw better than I can. Okay, most of them can. And I'm really looking forward to going into this dinosaur school.
Mrs. Simian?
I just wanted to thank you, Ms. Tiffany. A lot of positive feedback from the staff at Peralta on how quickly this is coming along, how respectful the staff is over there. So thank you for the team, the construction team at Peralta.
I'll relay that message to them.
They're good.
So I have a couple of questions. You said that we had to go back to the PSFA and the PSCOC with our square footage?
Correct. So with our original award, we are allotted a certain amount of square feet. During the programming phase, we find very creative ways on making sure that we're using that to adequacy standards and how our classroom sizes are, office spaces, every space we need. We go from the custodial closet to bathrooms and what the spaces look like. With that, it's very challenging, as we all know, to get to that number. We do have, we are slightly over that square footage, and with that, anything over the allotted amount, we do have to get the council's approval on as they are participating and paying for this project and see whether that is 100% district-funded or whether they support that. We're in a very interesting time as they are adjusting the adequacy standards. The adequacy standards are not guaranteed for us. They need to be justified. So what we will do is go and tell our story on why this programming, we feel, is in the best interest of the district and Am Parish to serve our students' educational needs. And so we are slightly over around 1,700 square feet.
1,700 square feet?
1,700.
Is that what we were awarded, or that's?
That's what we're going over by that much.
We're going over by 17.
So we will be presenting that to them on, on that overage.
So if they don't approve it, then that means?
We go back and look at redefining some spaces.
Or the district pays the difference?
We still have to get their approval, regardless. Yeah, regardless, we'd get their approval.
Mrs. McMahon, can you explain some of the gym spaces and what was currently in there, so there's a better description and understanding?
Sure. So one of the spaces that we're looking at adding additional square footage is the gymnasium. To adequacy standard right now is the size of gym they currently have, which PSFA is very aware upon their site visit how small that space is. We do have two PE teachers on that site, which is technically two classroom spaces. So what we are looking at is adding the additional square footage to accommodate two PE classes in there. So that's the additional 1,700 square feet that you're looking at. Because it is an educational space, we did this at Peralta Elementary. Also, not only for our students there, but our community and supporting this as a community hub for Am Parish. We felt it was very important to create a space that's a gathering place. We don't have an auditorium, you know, anywhere for everyone to get together. So the ideal is to be strategic in where we put that additional square footage, and a gym is a great place to expand a little bit, to have a central meeting place where all the kids can meet. You can have performances in there as well. So that's primarily where you're going to see the increase in square footage is due to the gymnasium.
When do we go back? We go back in July?
I believe the next PSCOC meeting is in July. Our deadline for our request to PSFA will be June 13.
And with that, we've already been awarded a certain amount of money along with the square footage?
Yes. So it's based off of our square footage, and it's not necessarily an allotted money. It's a percentage. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I'd be more than happy to get those to Ms. Chavis on what our state and local match is, because they will pay a certain percent, and then we have to pay a certain percent of the outcome of that project.
Okay.
And Mrs. McMahon, correct me if I'm wrong. It was a better financially sound decision to move with a complete rebuild than go with the restructure, redesign because of the portables?
Correct. So when we looked at the evaluation of what, when, now that we had an architect team involved, we looked at what is this really going to cost us to renovate and add on to Am Parish, which was our original award from the council? And when we looked at having to displace, you know, over 400 kids into portables, we would need to create a portable campus, which not only adds the dollar amount, but also the time on the project. That's needing to design a temporary space, construct it with all infrastructure, plumbing, water, sewer, electrical, data, everything that goes along with that, and pushing this project back probably a year and a half time. And when we look at just being able to build a new project, the cost was actually slightly less to build a new school rather than the renovations that would be required and the infrastructure needed within the Peralta building.
If everything goes well, when would groundbreaking occur?
Right now, since we are wrapping up this programming phase, we still have, we're anticipated to have design towards the end of March is what we're scheduled at. This also depends on going to these meetings and approval along the way. We, we, we don't just design to the end. We have to get approval every step, and we submit that to PSFA. And so with that, we are looking to wrap up our final design in March, and then we would start the procurement process, which will take a couple of months, and then construction to begin after that. So and possibly next summer or towards the end of next summer is what we may be looking at.
And with us having new playground equipment, are we going to be designing around the playground, or does that have to be totally down as well for the rebuild?
I don't have an answer for you yet. We haven't gotten that designing phase on how the building and the adjacencies may work with our current facilities with the playgrounds. There's also the potential to relocate some of that playground equipment into the new site or other sites. Since it is new, we have reached out to our vendors to see what they felt that, that option might be as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your report. Loved the new PowerPoint, not the jersey.
That's not sad. Please. Thank you.
Yes, very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. McMahon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Tracyk, provide our monthly budget and finance report.
Hey. Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Chavis. So state of finances. So we are getting towards the finish line here. This is, reported this, I pulled these numbers about mid-May. And so a lot of the items have been posted for May. So you're looking about half, half a month of May left and one more month in June. If you look at, I have, well, I have the fund numbers. I have the descriptions of the fund, and then I have the budget authority that we have as of today. The budget authority after the bars, those highlighted blue numbers are the bars that you have just consented to today. Those are the changes that would happen once those are entered and approved by PED. If they're not blue, there are no change from what we have today. I don't anticipate any bars for either increases or decreases at this point. If we were to have any, it would be very small amount of, of activity. And then the next column I have what has been either spent, so paid for, either a check cut through accounts payable, wire, or payroll, or something that's been encumbered, which could be a balance on their, on someone's contract or a PO that has been issued but not paid. And then the balance remaining and the percentage balance left over. So in some cases, it's great to have a high number because that mean, if it's a fund that has cash, cash reserves, so if we don't spend it, we, we are able to spend it in the future. And other ones that are, need to be finalized, those you want your numbers to be smaller. And our percentages look, look good. If you go down all of the, all of the funds and the total, and you get to, we are currently, as of when I put this out, we're at 30% remaining. And then the prior month, we were at 31. The next section is operational revenue. It shows what I have budgeted for revenue and the revenue received and the balance remaining. And we are at 8% remaining. If you look at the different categories, you can see the first one, there's only 4% left remaining. We are posted that I looked at, and the revenue for that has been posted for May, so we just have one more month left. The next one, interest on investments, we have received way more in interest than I had budgeted for, so that's why you have the negative there. And the tower revenues, we're right on track with that, 7%. There's one more payment remaining. Our S E G, 8% left. That is the one, one month worth of S E G remaining to be received. And indirect costs, this last, we just posted third quarter, and the amount we received is greater than I had budgeted. So we will receive at least every, all the revenue that I have budgeted for. And then the bottom just shows, you know, where we, one month out of 12, that's the 8%, and that's where we're at. So we're on target. That is all I have. Are there any questions?
Members of the board, questions? You're yawning.
I do have a question, just curiosity. The athletics, we went over $20,000. Is, is that common to have a deficit for athletics? Or, you know, I know some of these other ones, there's deficits and, and the like the transportation that's covered by operational, right? That's something that we know. But is athletics one that goes?
It is one that I always plan on, plan on covering. However, like, I remember a year that, when, when football's doing great, and a lot of people come, and there are a lot of gate receipts. That happens to be when a year that, that we don't have to cover. So.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Does the athletics total include? That shouldn't include the STEAM club from Los Unis High School that's going to their national. No, it's not in there?
Don't know. Most of, when it comes to the gate receipts, it's paying more for those employees that come in, that will, ticket takers and, and that time clock, those type of expenses on, on those. And then with the gate receipts. So it doesn't have anything to do with the uniforms. All of that comes out of operational, the coaches, and so this is just pretty much what you're seeing at the games.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
And will the childcare block grant, the 25157, does that finally get caught up before the end of June?
No, that will stay in the negative.
Wow.
That is a fund that we only receive revenue when the children that are being watched in the grads program are CYFD children.
Okay.
So when that happens, so it, you know, not all, not all the students, children that are in the grads program are CYFD. So that fluctuates, but that is, that, I, I can't remember a year that operational hasn't had to supplement.
Supplement that. Yeah, I've seen that in red.
Way a hundred thousand dollars, though. That's a lot of supplementing.
Yeah.
Right. They did, we barely received any revenue this year.
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Tracyk. So I have somebody who's been patiently waiting all night, and so I'm going to introduce him first. So I would like to introduce our new principal at Catherine Gago's Elementary, Mr. Michael Johnson, is our new principal at KGE. Yesterday, he was introduced to the staff and the KGE community. Mr. Johnson is moving to Los Unis from East Texas. He brings many years of experience with him, and we are excited to welcome him to our district. Mr. Johnson, welcome.
Of all nights for you to attend, ours, the night that we, we are showing you our very best, clearing the room, you know, the whole night here. Welcome to the community. Which part of Texas?
Orange, Texas. About 50 miles from the prison border, down on the market.
Holy smokes. So is that why you were looking for a job in Los Unis? Was your wife had taught here before, or?
Yes.
Really?
Yes, we, we had, she wanted to go back. It's time for us to be done with Texas, and, and we were not done by any means. So she said, let's see, where do you live? And so she's followed me around for a lot of years, and so I said, I'll go where you live.
Well, congratulations. And I understand being done with Texas. I appreciate that. Welcome to the land of enchantment. Welcome to Los Unis Schools. Appreciate you uprooting and moving back. So we hope that we treat you well, and we hope that you enjoy it. Great. You're two days in. That's awesome. We'll take two, two in a row. We'll take them. That's awesome.
I would like to point out that Mr. Johnson has not fully completed his school year in Texas, but he did commit to flying to Los Unis to New Mexico on Sunday evening to be here to meet with KGE community members, staff, students the rest of this week. So he did leave his current position early, said goodbye, and he wanted to, to introduce himself and be a part of our community and be, begin his journey of Los Unis. So thank you. Thank you for being here.
Very much.
So I know he's probably excited to go home, so thank you, Mr. Johnson.
You can stay if you want. Time to run for the door if you.
We are in our last week of the 2025, 2026 school year. That is hard to believe. It feels, 2020, see, I'm already thinking about next school year. I knew I wrote that wrong. I'm already thinking about next school year. So that's really hard to believe. I think we came back from winter break, and I blinked my eyes, and we were in May. So that happened really fast. There are many end-of-the-school-year events occurring at school sites. I want to remind our students to follow our school rules. We do not want any discipline consequences to follow our students into next school year. Our last day of school is on Friday, and it is a full day of school. Yesterday, we celebrated our Century High School, Los Unis High School, and Valencia High School classes of 2025 at their graduation ceremonies. There were over 600 graduates from our three high schools. I would like to point out the success at Century High School. We had 102 students graduate from Century High School. That is the highest number of graduates from Century High School. Kudos to our Centurions. It was exciting to watch them. I really enjoyed the end of graduation when they all decided to come back to the stage, and they were dancing to their class song as they walked the stage once more. So that was exciting. We want to extend our congratulations to all of our graduates and wish them great success in their future endeavors. I would like to recognize our Los Unis School retirees for the school year. We have 33 individuals retiring this year. Thank you retirees for your many dedicated years of service to our district. We wish you a very restful retirement. Thank you retirees for your many dedicated years of service to our district. We wish you a very restful retirement. Summer programs already begin next week for our students. They do not have any rest. We begin next week. There are tutoring programs, summer school and extended school year programs that will start after we return from the more Memorial Day weekend. Congratulations to our sport spring sports teams and student athletes. It was a successful season for our Jaguars and Tigers. We had three of our teams, baseball and softball teams reached the state tournament. Including many of our as well as many of our track and field student athletes. And our golf team from Los Llanes High School and I believe our tennis team from Valencia High School. So well represented to well represented at the state tournaments. Congratulations to the Los Llanes High School baseball team for reaching the semifinals in the state baseball tournament. Our Tigers had an exciting tournament experience and according to the journal, sports journalist James Yodas, so for those of you who follow James Yodas, he is very. Particular about high school sports and he is very well versed. He did note that our Tigers. Have produced an upset of the their upset here this year was a caliber like no other. Regardless of the season, classification, sport or gender. The Los Llanes High School Tigers beat La Cueva. They were down six zero in the first inning on Thursday evening. They came back and they won. So that is that is huge. So major kudos to our Tigers and that is a nice compliment from James Yodas. Thank you to all the individuals who spent many hours preparing for the graduation ceremonies and robing ceremonies. There are many unsung heroes who work behind the scenes to make the ceremonies a success. Thank you team members for your dedication and service. And thank you also to our students who contributed to the preparation and take down of the graduation decorations. If you were there shortly after Los Llanes High School graduated, within fifteen minutes, everything was torn down, put away. And we were ready to load up the vehicle so that our maintenance team could get home at a decent hour. So thank you to everybody who made this happen. And I have seen on YouTube that we have many, many views from the graduation ceremonies, so thank you also to those of uh those of you who made it possible. As we complete the school year, I would like to thank our Los Llanes School staff for their hard work, dedication and support of our students this school year. Our school year included many shiny moments as well as challenging ones. Your continued mission to educate our students always shine through. We wish you a very restful summer and look forward to welcoming everyone back in late July, early August. And with that, that concludes my report.
Item L was for informational purposes only. No action is needed or warranted at this time. We are on item M, board commendations. Members of the board, do you have anything specific that you would like to raise for raise or recognition?
I would just like to say uh what what Mrs. Travis said, I mean, I really appreciate the kids that were there, especially the honor. Society kids at at all the robings, they were very respectful and caring what our needs were. Uh the maintenance department, the transportation department, I mean, all the staff, especially all the. Administration and all their people there and the security, it was just uh it was a great show. Thank you.
It was a great show. Um, Mr. Tally, any commendations or anything that you want to raise?
Nothing that's not been covered.
Okay.
Uh I just want to go ahead and thank everyone uh for the robing and the graduations ceremonies. Um the students, the staff. I do want to put out a special shout out to all the individuals that set up for the graduation. Set up and pack up, and if you'll just bear with me a minute. It bears the opportunity to say their names. Ruben Garcia, Joseph Barella, Philip Castillo, Gilbert Quintana. Tommy Bravoy, Michael Silva, Andrew Chavis, Thomas Cassius. Uh John Dallas, Nate Welch, Joseph Chavis, James Padilla. Thank you for the graduation setup and take down. They are amazing. They could work for roadies at any concert across the country. It was up, it was down. Uh and I think it took myself longer to get up that ramp than they were done. Uh for the graduation, uh signs and banners, basically all maintenance. Casey Sermon's, Patrick Adagorn, Joseph Chavis, Philip Garcia, Pat Encinas. Thomas Cassius, Gilbert Adamio, Vince Carvahal, John Dallas again. Um Mark Hendricks, John Garcia, Joe Silva, Ricardo Sanchez, Leroy Torres, James Padilla. Uh Philip Castillo, Michael Silva, Nate Welch, Juan Garcia, George Adagorn. Uh Terry Hollers, Kenneth Reese, Andrew Chavis, Gilbert Quintana. Andrea Andrea Garcia, Steve Rubio, Tommy Bravoy again and Vince uh Mattis. Thank you again. And then without further ado, the central office staff are always doing such a great job. Uh Victoria Flores, uh Anis Moreno, Lisa, Ms. Kittredge, thank you. Sandy, of course, Mr. Tracyk, Jessica Montano and Susan Chavis, you guys all deserve. Massages, pedicures and some rest. We appreciate it so much. It doesn't, it doesn't just happen and it was flawless. It was beautiful. So be sure to thank the staff. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for that. Um there were a couple of student teams that because they came in at the end, we didn't quite get to celebrate them as much. C H S's STEM team won the A F R L STEM challenge. They beat out more than twenty teams. And I was very happy to see that, especially with uh C H S starting to get some recognitions. We like those blue placards and um first place awards in Los Llanes. So thank you very much for uh that particular team and their work. We also had a few additional athletes sign with their colleges over the last couple of weeks. So we want to wish those athletes the very best as they move forward. Um we had this year, thank you to all imaginable. We had two successful proms. Nobody was harmed, no accidents. Well, we had three, that's correct because we had century highs. No calls in the middle of the night. We had graduation parties that so far have been successful. So thank you to our community who's also helping us watch out for kids and their safety. We appreciate that very, very much. Um shout out also, same thing I want to echo for the graduation. It could not have been smoother, nicer. Uh people were well behaved, parents and whatnot were also very well behaved, even though they were very excited and and members were there. We still appreciate that everybody um followed the rules like we asked them to and they were uh well received and our students were well received. I actually had a staff member from U N M stop me and tell us that we were one of the better districts that they let into their facility. So I will take that as a win. That was a very nice thing to say. So having to conclude that, we are now going to go on to item N, discussion and approval of the resolution. Um number twenty five def zero zero three Los Llanes Schools District Foundation. Mrs. Travis, I'm going to ask for your information on this, please.
Yes, so we are requesting you're asking for your approval to begin a. And to initiate a Los Llanes Schools District Foundation. So our neighbors to the north and many of our universities have foundations. It is a five oh three C. Nonprofit organization. When we first started receiving grants from Meta. They asked us if we were a five oh three C. We currently are not and we do not have any affiliations other than Pi, which is our partners in education. That happened during COVID. At the time, we had to go through a different five oh three C because of the COVID restrictions and requirements. So it puts us in a position as a school district that if we have private donors such or private industries, private businesses. Such as Meta, they cannot contribute directly to Los Llanes Schools because of their requirements. And what they have as far as donations. So that started us down a very long adventure. This has been something that we've discussed for many, many years. We do have an annual fundraiser, the golf tournament, which is coming up on May thirtieth, a week from Friday. This would be one of the activities that the foundation would resume control over or begin to sponsor. It would be a an organization that again is not affiliated with Los Llanes Schools but is a foundation. And they would be supporting your school district through their fundraising endeavors. But it would be a foundation that is directly supporting Los Llanes Schools. We also have many private donors who would like to contribute money for scholarships for Los Llanes Schools. This would be a venue for them to contribute to the scholarships and we would be following the five oh three C requirements. I have had many alumni approach me asking to donate directly to Los Llanes Schools. And they would like to have that five oh three C sponsor behind them because of tax purposes, tax deduction purposes. But I have had, I can't even count anymore how many alumni who have asked about a foundation to donate. Because they are very vested in our community, some very close to home and some not so close. So that gives you an overview and I will stand for any questions.
Yeah, uh on on that, how does that work out with, you know, the auditing parts? I know there's anti anti donation laws and such like that. How does that fall into uh? That place and 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 where we keep that money, is that, would that be evenly distributed through needs or how will we determine, like you said, scholarships?
So that would not be any part of Los Llanes Schools. They would be running their own foundation, their own nonprofit, so they would be subject to their own auditing, similar to a booster club or a parent teacher organization.
So wouldn't actually be part of the school?
Correct, no. So if you think of U N M's foundation, they're a very large foundation. A P S has a foundation. This would be different from A P S's because A P S is actually a department within the school district. This would be outside of Los Llanes Schools.
But it won't, we won't have any basically interweaving of cash or nothing like that?
None. They would start their own.
And I I I guess another thing would, are school employees able to be involved in that foundation?
There would be.
Conflict of interest.
So there would be very clear bylaws and procedures that they would have to follow. So I think as far as handling money, we would fall under the same requirements like booster clubs or P T Cs. I was part of the parent teacher committee at Putah Elementary for many years. I held an office on the board and I never touched the money. That had to go to non-employees.
Thank you.
Mr. Vickers, any questions?
Uh no, I was gonna actually bring this up for future meetings. I didn't realize it was on this agenda, so I'm definitely in favor of it.
Mr. Tally, any questions?
No.
Mrs. Simoia?
Uh lots. Um we know the why. I I sit on U N M's foundation, so I know the why. What I don't have here in order to be able to make decisions on this this evening is the who, what, where, when. Most foundations, you know, when they get together, they set up bylaws, have an established board. Um don't have any of that in front of us tonight, so uh I'm not prepared to. Really take this to a vote this time.
I wanna, I wanna echo off of that because um my concern is, is if this has nothing to do with the Los Llanes Schools. Why are Los Llanes resources, district resources being used to draft this?
So this is the first step in creating it because it has Los Llanes Schools on it. So when I spoke to our council, this is from Geno Zamora, he had talked about this would be the first step in that process.
Right, so that we we've allocated the board, that's a board council. Board resource, and this is the first time the board is hearing about those resources being used in a way that the board doesn't know about.
So when you look at the foundation and looking at the steps, and correct, you are right, so it is school resources. The way to start this, because the reason that Pi exists, they have to start on their own and Pi supports all the schools in Valencia County. This would support Los Llanes Schools as a district.
So why would this start happening when this is outside of the day to day administration of the school district?
So in order for them to support Los Llanes Schools, they have to start with this process first.
Having people from the foundation coming and talking to us about this.
Though this would, this is the first step to even start a foundation. We cannot do that without your approval.
I'm not clear with it, and if you can't hear my tone, I'm a little irritated. Because we don't have enough information and district resources. And we're supposed to be responsible for knowing the oversight of the district and we're, we don't.
Okay.
So um I will move to table this. Um and have it first presented at a work session where we could have better information from the beginning. So that my motion is to table this item. And schedule it for a work session, maybe for later June.
I'll second that motion.
Sir, any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So exactly what language are you opposed to?
I don't know anything about this. I don't understand how much we've spent. I don't understand who else has been involved. I don't understand the process of making a foundation. I don't understand where the money would go, how it would be tracked. We've talked about there would be bylaws for this. There would be um rules for that. I don't understand any of it. I I don't understand any of it. So how could I, like Mrs. Simoia just said, how could I begin to make a decision when I don't understand it? I know what a foundation is. I don't know what our involvement is in it. So I just would like better information and more clarity.
Okay, I I'm just seeing it it uh. That we are declaring that we are seeking to work with individuals who are willing to establish a foundation. And etcetera, what it's what it's dedicated to. And I don't see that we're pledging any money or anything at this point.
We've already committed money through the use of our council. So I mean, that's where I just, I don't understand it. I just don't understand it. And yes, we can pledge to work with a lot of organizations. Um but that those don't require the starting of a foundation.
And Madam President, I do see the need for the starting of the foundation and I understand the starting point. It does have to get the board's approval. Because it is the benefactor of the foundation would be the board. Um but I would in the work session like to have a little more information from. The response from the board attorney to do this. I understand why we have to do this. All the universities have had to do that. And again, for the anti-donation clause, the bylaws, setting up the board, how they see that blowing into place. It will take resources to do this. Usually there's community involvement and there is usually board involvement. From my, from my experience working on the U N M board, and there is all community involvement, board involvement, but there are resources. That will need to be dedicated to this for oversight and setup. Um from staff within the district. So I would like to, as uh as my second. Uh stated, um I would like to see this in a work session so that we could discuss this further. I think this is a great time over the summer so we can work on it. I'm not opposed to this by any means. I think this is a wonderful idea. Uh five oh three C, there are a lot of organizations that cannot contribute unless you have the five oh three C. Um other than and before, we have an awful lot of community members that donate specifically. To individual scholarships, but we do not, there is no control of that. They want to give to one school or another. There's, that's their preference and that's, but if you're wanting a larger money from an organization. Gotta, you've got to have that not for profit and foundation with bylaws. So a good work session, I think, is in order for it.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? I'm gonna call for the vote, Mr. Vickers.
Uh no.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion passes four one. I'm going to call for a two minute break. Something that I need is in the other room, so I'm taking a break. If you go for, I'll be back in less than one twenty seconds. Am I over?
You you said twenty seconds, I was counting them.
Oh, did I not say one hundred twenty seconds? Those are just.
Thank you.
Did you bring those on you? See, it wasn't just me. Just want to point that out. We are now on, I'm going to call us back to order at eight oh eight. Thank you for that little pause. Apologize, I didn't know my feeling. We're on item O, affirmation of B O E adherence to and knowledge of board roles and responsibilities. Limitations of the Board of Education compliance with the Open Meetings Act. This is per the discussion item that was on the April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five special board meeting agenda. Um, where I presented a draft and this is now in its um, final version. So I'll be reading it. It is lengthy and I apologize for that. The board has then receded the decision for the New Mexico Department of Justice ECS two zero two four zero seven one six two one D nine. Decision from the New Mexico Department of Justice, the N M D O J dated March twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. The board is anxious to be in full compliance of all laws and with this letter and two public readings, has acted on the Government Council and Accountability Divisions, the G C A and the New Mexico Department of Justice's suggestions to correct the public record. But no, number one, the first reading was an initial draft prepared by Dr. Osowski, who presented the draft during item G on the April twenty nine, twenty twenty five regular board meeting. The second reading is the final version presented herein and will be read at the properly convened meeting to be held on May twentieth, twenty twenty five. From the letter from the Attorney General dated March twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Quote, "The allegations in the complaint raised concerns with your public bodies' compliance with the New Mexico's government transparency laws, specifically the Open Meeting Act, the O M A, New Mexico Statute nineteen seventy eight, sections ten fifteen, one, two, four. Public bodies across our state at every level of government are required to comply with both the written requirements and spirit and intent behind our sunshine laws, which provide the public a fundamental right to obtain information regarding the affairs and business of our representative government," end quote. The G C A requires that the board provide a summary of the O M A violations outlined in this letter, as well as a clear explanation of the actions and discussions that occurred outside of an open meeting regarding, regarding the P S A for legal services. Specifically, the G C A requires the board provide, number one, a clear explanation of the actions and discussions that occurred outside of an open meeting regarding the P S A for legal services. Part A, how and when these conversations occurred. And B, the discussions between board members regarding a P S A with Cuddy and McCarthy at the law conference, which includes the individuals Dr. Osowski polled regarding the potential P S A. The Losina Schools Board of Education Board, information and belief is that the conversations for a professional services agreement, P S A, began on Wednesday tenth, twenty twenty four. Dr. Kettler traveled with three board members using a district vehicle assigned to Dr. Kettler to a regional New Mexico school boards training held in Magdalena, New Mexico. The three board members were Mr. Tally and Bennett and Mrs. Otero. Dr. Osowski and Mr. P. David Vickers neither participated in the event or the conversation held on April tenth, twenty twenty four. Sometime during the travel, Mrs. Otero inquired if Mr. Bennett and Talat, Tally were happy or satisfied with the quality of legal counsel received from current board council, Roxy de Santiago, who is employed by the Walsh Gallegos Law Firm. Footnote number two, Mrs. Otero resigned from the board on July twenty fourth, twenty twenty four after she was questioned by Dr. Osowski and Ms. Castillo about her current legal residence. Dr. Osowski learned from constituents that Mrs. Otero did not currently reside within the geographical boundaries established by the board for single-member district number two, for the Losina Schools, or for the Losina's public schools. Examination of publicly available records indicated that the physical address she listed on the statement of intent and affirmed to be true in August twenty twenty three was inconsistent with public records. Mrs. Otero won the regular election by thirty-five votes over Mrs. Sonia Simoia, who was appointed by the vote to fill the vacancy in single-member district number two in September twenty twenty four. After Mrs. Otero resigned, she filed a complaint in early August twenty twenty four against the board, specifically against Dr. Osowski. Mrs. Otero was a third vote in the two-three vote in the Cuddy P S A, with a note to see footnote ten, which I will get to. All persons traveling together expressed their individual opinions or observations of their experience with Ms. de Santiago, including Dr. Kettler, who allegedly was also unsatisfied with Ms. de Santiago. One particular concern raised was that Dr. Kettler regularly engaged with Ms. de Santiago and Mr. Melendros from the Madral Law Firm about concerns related to the district or specific board members. Hence, had a relationship with Dr. Kettler that could impact their ability to fairly advise the board in matters concerning the superintendent board employment relationship. There is footnote number three, the topics and frequencies of the interactions between Dr. Kettler and Ms. de Santiago, Ms. de Santiago or Mr. Melendros are captured in the monthly invoices and were learned about during the course of the investigation. Mr. Bennett did call Dr. Osowski on Thursday, April eleventh, to tell her about the conversation and asked how the board could find a different law firm that would advise only the board and not be available to the superintendent. Dr. Osowski stated she was unsure and would need to ask questions. Part of Dr. Osowski's research included calling a superintendent of another New Mexico public school district. Dr. Osowski reports she asked how the board could secure legal counsel other than those selected in the most recent request for proposal, R F P. That person suggested solution was to request a professional services agreement, P S A from the legal firm that the board is interested in engaging with and to become familiar with the stipulations for a P S A found in the New Mexico procurement code. This person noted that it is common practice for superintendents to authorize a purchase order, P O, for P S As up to the state limit of sixty thousand dollars, E G fifty-nine nine ninety-nine ninety-nine cents. And these P S As do not require board action if the board does not have a specific policy about when the superintendent is authorized to request a P S A or issue a P A, P O for payment of those services. Currently, the board does not have a specific policy that details when any P S A and the corresponding P O for payment must come before the board for public discussion and vote. Furthermore, the board learned from the recent investigation that it is common practice for the superintendent to approve P S As up to fifty-nine nine ninety-nine ninety-nine cents limit without board approval. Footnote for, number four, the board, when placing Dr. Kettler on paid administrative leave pending the results of an investigation, investigation into allegations of misconduct, authorized the Cuddy McCarthy Law Firm to select an appropriate firm to conduct and complete the investigation. Cuddy McCarthy selected D D S K to conduct the investigation. Then, on third, on Tuesday, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, after a properly announced board work session and before the regular meeting, in the board conference room, Dr. Alsowski specifically asked if the board members were satisfied with the quality of the representation provided by Ms. de Santiago. Present in the room were Mrs. Otero and Mr. Bennett, Talley and Vickers. Dr. Osowski's notes and assertions are that all persons in the room expressed their negative opinions about the services provided to the board from Ms. de Santiago. Dr. Osowski confirmed that the board members wanted her to begin to look at another law firm specifically for the purpose of providing counsel to the board. Dr. Osowski specifically mentioned the possibility of looking first at Cuddy and McCarthy Law Firm, Cuddy, as she knew of their reputation with public school law. Dr. Osowski's notes and assertions are that no person objected to her looking into the process of identifying different counsel for the board. Footnote number five, during the June eighteenth, twenty twenty four regularly scheduled board meeting, when Dr. Osowski recounted the specific situation during the discussion of the agenda items specific to the P S A for Cuddy, both Mr. Tally and Vickers stated they did not recall this conversation. After the work such, session scheduled Tuesday, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, Dr. Osowski approached Mrs. Sanders and asked her about how P S As for legal services for the district were issued when she was employed in the district. But note number six, the board adopted the practice of holding work sessions as a strategy to engage with and involve the public in discussions on topics that the board has an interest in receiving more information. Mrs. Sanders attended this particular work session. Mrs. Sanders, who is a former superintendent of Losina Schools, stated that Cuddy had previously provided general legal counsel via P S A and she believed the P S A would still be current. She did contact Dr. Osowski a few days after the work session to state that there was one current P S A with Cuddy. Footnote number seven, previously, Dr. Osowski reported that there were two P S As in place with the Cuddy Law Firm when a po, when, upon investigation, there were three. The first was, also included P O number two-three zero-zero-seven-two and was based on an R F P two oh one nine dash zero-zero-six H R one and was a contract renewal for the twenty-two twenty-three school year. P O two-three zero-zero-seven-two was closed on six twenty-one, twenty twenty-four by an employee in the business department. The second P O was two-four zero-six-six-nine. The uh, P O allowed projects were identified as undesignedated and the reference for the for the P O was legal open projects. P O two-four zero-six-six-nine was closed on six twenty-one, twenty twenty-four by the same employee in the business department. This P S A was set to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four and was for a maximum amount of fifty-nine nine ninety-nine. Mrs. Sanders suggested the board connect with Laura Castillo of Cuddy at the upcoming school law conference to ask questions. Before the special meeting of the board held on Tuesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-four, Dr. Osowski relayed the information learned about Cuddy, specifically that the board did have a current P S A with Cuddy for general legal services, which was suitable for the board's purposes. She did, again, ask the members of the board if they were comfortable with her pursuing the next steps associated with either extending the current P S A or requesting a revised P S A with Cuddy. From her personal notes and assertions, there were no objections or other concerns raised. She believed and still believes she was exhibiting good boardsmanship by confirming the desires of the board. However, the G C A has determined that when Dr. Osowski asked the board members about renewing the existing P S A or requesting a new P S A with Cuddy, she polled the board, which is a violation of the O M A. Then, four members of the board attended the school law conference in Albuquerque, New Mexico on Thursday, May thirtieth through Saturday, June first, twenty twenty-four. Specifically, Mr. Bennett and Vickers, Mrs. Otero and Dr. Osowski attended the school law conference. Footnote eight, Mrs. Otero attended sessions on Thursday, May thirtieth only. She did not attend other sessions at the law conference in twenty twenty-four. The board properly noticed via written announcements of meetings that were normally distributed that the possibility of a quorum of the board would be present at this conference as required by the O M A. During the conference, the board had meals together and attended some of the same sessions where in a quorum of the board may be present. The school law conference is an opportunity for board members to learn, ask questions and get information from legal experts in the field of school law and is sponsored by Cuddy and the New Mexico School Board Association. Many conference sessions were presented by attorneys from Cuddy, as well many conference sessions were presented by representatives from the Walsh Gallegos and Ortiz Amora Law Firms, both of which were selected to provide legal services for the board during the most recent R F P. All board members had opportunities to ask questions of and speak to attorneys presenting or available at the time. On Thursday, May thirtieth, Dr. Osowski located the Cuddy booth and obtained five copies of Ms. Castillo's business card. Throughout the day, she provided Ms. Castillo's business card to board members attending the conference and encouraged them to meet Ms. Castillo or talk with others from Cuddy. During the law, school law conference, she did text mess, message Ms. Castillo. She did ask about her availability on Friday, May thirty-first, or June, Saturday, June first, and willingness to meet in person during the conference. Both, both Mr. Bennett and Dr. Osowski met with Ms. Castillo after the conference sessions ended on Friday, May thirty-first. During this meeting, they asked questions about the existing P S As, specifically how P S As are executed, the limitations and allowances for the board to utilize the existing P S A. The suggested best course of action giving the existing P S A would expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and why Cuddy was not selected for an R F P. Neither Mr. Bennett nor Dr. Osowski conducted board business by asking these questions. Instead, both Bennett and Osowski asserted they were attempting to be well-informed about an area that neither had subject matter expertise. On Monday, June third, twenty twenty-four, Dr. Osowski emailed Dr. Keller and requested he submit a P O for Cuddy in the amount not to exceed fifty-nine nine ninety-nine and ninety-nine cents. Dr. Keller refused the request by stating that he conferred with Mr. Melendros of the Madral Spurling Rule Law Firm about the board president's ability to request a P O to put in place a P S A for legal services specific for the board. Mr. Melendros advised that the action should be a public vote of the board because the P S A would be for the services of the entire board, which the president cannot make that decision for the board. Mr. Melendros's response in email correspondence addressed to Dr. Keller was, quote, "Pursuant to section twenty-four dash five dash four J of the New Mexico statute statutes annotated, the board is a body rather than an individual, has the power to contract for and on behalf of the district. An individual board member is not authorized to contract on behalf of the board. Therefore, the suggestion that the board in a public meeting take action to authorize the professional services contract," end quote. Dr. Osowski's response to Dr. Keller's refusal was, quote, "F Y I. Previously, I asked if my colleagues would entertain a P S A with a different law firm other than the Walsh Gallegos Law Firm, and all said yes. At the law conference, I provided to three of my four colleagues the contract, contact information for the Cuddy Law Firm and encouraged them to speak with Ms. Castillo for their satisfaction. My point, from our conversation with Ms. Castillo, I have the authority to request the P S A. Additionally, I have no qualms or concerns in raising this to a formal vote whatsoever and in any format, executive or regular session." Footnote number nine, this was email communication that was cited in the New Mexico Department of Justice's decision. The P S A for Cuddy was placed on the agenda for June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four board meeting in the consent portion of the agenda. The motion to approve the P S A for Cuddy failed with a vote of two to three. Footnote number ten, the no votes for the Cuddy P S A were P. David Vickers, Justin Tally and four former board member, Monica Otero. The yes votes for the Cuddy P S A were Dr. Osowski and Bruce Bennett. Additionally, the G C A requires the board provide the public with a summary of any and all conversations regarding the P S A that occurred outside of the open meeting. In response to this specific requirement from the G C A, the following is additional information the board has learned from the recent investigation. Generally, all members of the board were unaware of these events until the investigation occurred and the evidence was compiled and shared with the board. Specifically, the investigation revealed that the superintendent had contacted some members of the board about the P S A for Cuddy, stating the P S A was unnecessary given the board had four legal firms on contract. Footnote number eleven, during the discussion of the Cuddy P S A item at the June eighteen, twenty twenty-four board meeting, Dr. Kettler publicly stated that two of the four firms selected in the most recent R F P communicated to him that they did not believe they could properly advise a board in matters specific to the superintendent board relationship, given their frequent interactions with Dr. Kettler. The third law firm specializes in collective bargaining, labor union negotiations, hence would not have been suitable for the board's general legal services needs. The board learned of this third law firm during the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Then, approximately fifteen minutes before the board meeting on Tuesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, Dr. Kettler directed an employee in the finance department via the employee supervisor to attend the board meeting. Board member Tally appeared at the June eighteen, twenty twenty-four board meeting telephonically from Germany to request to move the Cuddy P S A from the consent portion of the board agenda to the top of the action items on the board agenda. Footnote number twelve, the strategy was discussed in a telephone call recorded by Dr. Kettler and discovered in the investigation. The district is in possession of this recording. During the discussion of the agenda item for the P S A, Dr. Kettler then asked an employee from the finance department to come to the podium and advise the board about concerns with the Cuddy P S A. The employee was neither briefed nor prepared to advise the board and at that moment had made five statements that ranged from misleading to inaccurate. Footnote number thirteen, Laura Castillo summarized the misstatements or inaccuracies in an email communicated a communication dated July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four and are sent to Dr. Kettler in carbon copy to each board member. Then, the inaccuracies relayed at the board meeting are, A, that if the board or board president is unhappy with their legal counsel obtained via the most recent R F P, the board must send a vendor, the vendor a letter of concern to communicate their specific dissatisfaction. B, the board must give a vendor an opportunity to cure before working with another vendor. C, the vendors awarded through the R F P process have the right to get the business. The statements made during the board meeting that are misleading are, A, issuing a P S A with Cuddy could result in a protest from the selected vendors of the R F P. B, all P S Es must, all P S As must be vetted through the specific employee's office. B, all PSAs must be vetted through the specific employee's office. Ultimately, the board took a vote based on misleading or inaccurate information. Footnote number fourteen, footnotes ten and thirteen. The current PSA with Cuddy set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty, twenty-four, was in inexplicably closed on June twenty-first, twenty, twenty-four, three days after the board meeting. Cuddy billed for services provided during the month of June, twenty, twenty-four and early July, twenty, twenty-four without knowing the PO had been closed. The district did pay the total amount for the June, twenty, twenty-four billing, which resulted in an audit finding. Footnotes fifteen and sixteen. Number fifteen, the amount billed for services rendered in June, twenty, twenty-four was six hundred ninety-four dollars and eighteen cents. Footnote number sixteen, the auditor noted that, quote, "The board does not have a policy regarding which contracts and agreements they want to review and approve prior to delegating executive authority to the superintendent," end quote. The district's auditor confirmed, however, that the superintendent has the ability to sign PSAs not to exceed sixty thousand dollars and stated there were no significant unusual transactions, end quote. Footnote number seventeen. This was taken from the Los Luna Schools financial statements and supplementary information dated June thirtieth, twenty, twenty-four. In summary, given the most recent audit report is that it is in the board's best interest to write, discuss and ultimately adopt be an agenda item for a properly convened board meeting of board policy to specify the conditions in which the superintendent may request a PSA for services and authorize the corresponding PO without prior board approval for amounts up to sixty thousand dollars. It is rather a blessing in disguise to have the decision from the OMA complaint filed by Dr. Keller as the decision provides further justification for a board policy. Finally, the board wants to note for the record that for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four school year, four board members met the statutory training requirements, of which specific training in the New Mexico procurement law or the OMA is not explicitly required. However, at least four of the five board members have attended specific sessions addressing requirements for the OMA. Other required statements from the GCA are, one, the board does and will continue to abide by the procurement code. The board has already received training from the district CFO on December nineteenth, twenty, twenty-four on the procurement code. The board strives to continue learning and growing at every opportunity. The board has conducted a full review of past legal service procurements. The board had a PSA in place for all legal services built through Cuddy. There were no improper expenditures. Number three, the board engaged in OMA training during the NMSBA board trainings that occurred December, twenty, twenty-four, and again February thirteenth through fifteenth, twenty, twenty-five, and can ensure full compliance with the OMA. Four, the board affirms that the school board president has no authority or power individually and that individual board members may exercise authority over district affairs only by way of votes taken at a legal meeting of the board. Number four, or number five, the board does and will adhere to statutory limitations on school board authority. This matter should now be considered closed. It would stand for a motion to adopt these statements as listed in the report I just read. I will move to adopt the statements in the document that I just read. Is there a second?
Madam President, before we go on, we don't have any here thing here that says approval. Just an affirmation adherent.
An affirmation, that's correct. So do I need to amend my motion?
I would probably believe so.
Okay, then thank you for the correction. I move to affirm the statements listed in the work product I just or in the statement I just read, along with BOE adherence to and knowledge of board roles and responsibilities, limitations of the BOE and compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Is there a second to the affirmation?
Second, the affirmation.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Madam President, as I was not a seated board member during the time of the events occurred, I have been made aware since based upon the DOJ's findings. I don't believe it is appropriate for me to vote on this action.
Thank you very much. Duly noted. Any other discussion?
So. Where does this go? What is the disposition of this statement?
Goes directly to the two persons referenced on the the decision that was sent to all board members March twenty, whatever it was, March twenty-eighth. So this will go directly to along with other required documents. Number one is the two agenda items where it was read out loud for the public to correct the public record and then the written statements.
So it's going to the DOJ's specific people there?
Is there any other discussion? Madam Paul for the vote. Staining is Mrs. Simoyah. It's my motion. I will start it. I vote yes. Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
The affirmation passes four, zero, with Mrs. Simoyah stating. Okay, we're on to item P.
No.
Sorry, I've got too many agendas running around. Statement H, statement by board member Justin Tally.
Mr. Osowski, Acting Superintendent Chavez and fellow board members, there have been some changes in my family's life that could not have been foreseen at the time I accepted the position as a board member. Due to these changes, my family and I will be moving out of the single voter, single-member district in which I reside. In doing so, I will have to vacate this seat because I do not know the date we will be moving for sure and to help facilitate with all of the changes that will need to occur, I will be resigning my seat effective June four, twenty, twenty-five. Know that this is something I do with a heavy heart. This is not something I expected when I started this position. I am grateful for the time I've had to work with the district and with the and wish the best for the board members and the district. Los Lunas will be a premier district. Mr. Vickers, I have enjoyed your thoughts and your thought-provoking questions. I have always considered you a loose cannon and unpredictable, and this is something I have admired most about you. Thank you and keep it up. Mr. Bennett, I appreciate your dedication and concern for the district. I love your candor and your wit. Your Bruceisms have lightened many a difficult moment. Keep the jabronis in order. I will miss working with you. Ms. Simoyah, thank you for your willingness to step up into this position. Your knowledge and experience have contributed greatly to the success of the board and the district. I've learned a great deal from you. Dr. Osowski, it seems like we've been to hell and back. We oft have not been on the same page. There have been times that I have, there have been times that have been tense. That said, in truth, I know you want the best for the school. I know you spend lots of hours in deep thought for the schools. Do not stop. Note that I have just used one sound words in all my thanks to you.
Thank you enough. Mr. Tally, it is with a very, very heavy heart that I see that you'll be leaving the board because I too have valued your stagnion, I think is the word I gave you, of December, and your steadfastness. And you're right, we haven't always agreed. But that's been the very best part of this is being able to disagree with mutual respect and consideration for one another's points of views and our background and our efforts. So I am going to be very sorry to see you go.
Ms. Chavez, thank you for stepping up to fill the acting superintendent position. You came in at a tumultuous time in the district. I'm grateful you are willing to and have accepted the position of superintendent. No pressure, but I expect great things from you and your administration. Hopefully, we will be able to have some stability in the district. To the district, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to serve. Every member of this board is a contributor and I believe has the best interest of the district at heart. Along with being colleagues, I think of each of you as friends. At times when things have gotten difficult, Ms. Wolf reminds me why it is that we are doing this. Why is it that we are doing this? It's for the kids.
Is there any other comments that we'd like to make at this time?
Well, Mr. Tally, you know you're going to be missed because I do totally respect everything you brought to this board and you're you're highly educated, look at everything and the big word to use, but yeah, I think, you know. I'm done on one syllable, but I appreciate everything you've done for us. You're wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Tally, I believe you will still be an active member in this district and participating, and I hope that we can count on you for community participation on board assignments. So take care, take care of the situation we need to take care of and we hope to see you soon.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Tally, I appreciate your perspective and you know, I will also miss your, your input and and I hope we can find a replacement that will be up to speed with your expertise.
There's a lot to get up to speed with. I still feel like I am not up to speed, but I guess at this time I would motion that we untable the action item that
That's why you had. I know you're, would you be willing to come to the, there is a motion? Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that.
Thank you. Mr. Melendez, please join us at the podium.
Do we have to vote to, we have to vote on things?
Yeah, we do. Is there any discussion? Or let's vote on the motion to untable Mr. Vickers. How do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoyah?
Yes.
I vote yes. So we are bringing item. Which one was it?
Your eyes.
Presentation and approval of the board election resolution and proclamation.
Dr. Osowski?
Yes, sir.
My reason for tabling this was because I think there's going to be a change to what Mr. Melendez is.
I'm not sure he was in the room when you started, so.
No, I, I really apologize to you. I don't know what kind of a day it's been for all of us, but I get an emergency phone call and I had to step out because I don't talk in here, but I, I know that you hindered your resignation is what I understood and so.
Yeah, so when they said I could clear a room, I could also turn a board. Put that out there.
Well, let me, I, I don't want to do this on the run and make a mistake. So I previously said that you had into June to, and, and I said June fourth, I misspoke. It's like June twenty-fourth. So what but I, what I respectfully request is that we have a chance to regroup and I understand that under the state law, the board is given the opportunity to appoint a replacement. And if that replacement does not occur within thirty days, then the Public Education Department will appoint someone. So I trust, as you, I heard this board member Tally say, I hope we find someone you're equal or can get up to speed. So.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Melendez, that thirty days, that is from the date of my resignation, not from today, correct?
That is correct.
Yes, correct.
So we have a little more than thirty days.
Thank you, by the way.
So I need just a quick question. Mr. Tally, what position do you hold?
I.
Number, numbered position.
I am district one board member.
Okay. And so your replacement, which let me just say this quickly, I assume would be that your replacement would take over by sometime this summer. They would have the opportunity to serve until the next election, which would be November fourth, and there would be a replacement. So instead of two four-year terms, there would be two two-year terms, one for your seat and one for Ms. Moya's seat. And so I am feeling more comfortable already. I, I can amend section two in the resolution, which would say two persons shall be elected to the board for a full four-year term. Those are position three and position five. And instead of one person, I would put two persons shall be elected to the Board of Education for a two-year term, which is the remainder of your term, Mr. Tally?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that would be from single-member districts, which would be positions one and two. I'm comfortable doing that if you are. I'm also comfortable redoing this, sending it back to you and having you vote on it in June.
Thank you very much.
For our option this evening, we could amend it and vote the amendment, correct?
Yes. You could, you could vote to amend section two to have two persons elected for a two-year term.
Dr. Osowski?
Sir.
I move that we approve this resolution and proclamation of regular or other school district election with the following amendments. With section two, it would read, two persons shall be elected to the Board of Education of the district for a term of two years from single-member districts within the district and positions to be filled as designated as position one, district one, and position two, district two.
I will second that. Is there any discussion? I am going to call for the vote. Mr. Tally, it is your motion.
We missed the second.
Sorry?
Who seconded?
I seconded. Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoyah?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes five, zero. Thank you, Mr. Melendez. Thank you for waiting.
You've had some serious business for tonight. I I need to ask that I leave with you the election resolution. It's just to be signed by the board president and secretary later this week. You had a long lead for whenever you can, and I will
Thank you, thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Not a apology, it's anything.
No. All of those things happened. We've had a very long night. Please drive safely. We are now on to item S. New business, board member requests for topics for the upcoming boardwork session or boardwork meetings. We have still a pretty full docket to get us through the summer. Is there anything else though that you would like us to see if we could squeeze in between June, July and August?
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to go ahead and bring to a work session the Los Luna Schools Board of Education Resolution twenty-five dash zero, zero, three. This is the desire to create the foundation with a five oh three C to allow us to accept corporates' sponsorships and donations.
Absolutely. I think I'd like to get that on for June so that we can move on it as quickly as possible, whether we have more information. So June twenty twenty four.
Yep.
Anything else? Meaning your business. That brings me to item T, the announcement of meetings. As allowed by the Open Meetings Act and the District Open Meetings Resolution, on occasion, a quorum of the school board members attend the same functions, including school and district celebrations and ceremonies, as well as sports functions, conferences, workshops, trainings, and community events. Board members will refrain from discussing and/or acting on Los Luna Schools Board of Education issues in those settings. In addition, only official meetings are published, and if other meetings are scheduled, they will be announced in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. That being said, I would like to announce the following meetings. June third, twenty twenty five, a boardwork session to be held in the Central Office Board Room. Topics will be as listed on the agenda, which is forthcoming. This will be for discussion informational purposes only. No action will be taken. A quorum may be in attendance. That will occur from four to five o'clock PM. Also on June third, twenty twenty five, a special board meeting in the Central Office Board Room. Topics will be listed on the agenda, which is forthcoming. The quorum may be in attendance, and that will occur at six o'clock PM. June five through seven, twenty twenty five, the New Mexico School Boards Association Forty-Sixth Annual School Law Conference, which is held at Embassy Suites one thousand Woodward Place Northeast, Albuquerque, New Mexico, eight seven one oh two. This will be for training purposes only. No decisions will be made, and a quorum may be in attendance. On June twelfth, twenty twenty four, the Audit Committee Meeting in the Central Office Conference Room. Attendance is by invitation only, and that will occur at three o'clock PM. On June twelfth, twenty twenty five, the Finance Committee Meeting in the Central Office Conference Room, that will occur at four o'clock PM. On June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, and the Regular Board Meeting, a regular board meeting which will occur in the Central Office Board Room, that will occur at six o'clock PM. We are now at item U, adjournment.
Move.
Mr. Bennett is quick to make the motion. The second is by Mr. Tally. I am calling for the vote, Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Hardly I vote yes. This motion passes.
Thank you all, everyone.
Meeting is adjourned at eight forty eight PM.